Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty seventh. In compliance with state law, city council regular meeting will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'm calling this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the role.
Yes, Councilmember Soltis.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hertzak.
Here.
Councilmember Hardjason.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Redner.
I am present.
We have a coroner.
Thank you, President. Everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. With that, we'll move into approval of agenda. Before we do that, we do have new business item number two. We are going to remove that from tonight's business and move that to a future agenda item, which will come back to us. With that, is there any other changes?
Just a reminder about the minutes that need to be approved because of the scripters there on the last one that were emailed out to council.
We had a scribners' error on the August ninth.
Correct.
Correct. There was just a date that was incorrect.
Okay. And so we'll be doing that with the approval on the consent agenda as well. Any other changes? Look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. With that, if council could please join me in front of the dais to for some proclamations. All right, night. We have a proclamation, and Melanie, you are accepting this one, I believe? If you'd like to join us from the Pugh Sound Fire Region. You can join us right up here, front and center. Better? All right, thank you for being here tonight to accept this.
So welcome.
We have a proclamation. Whereas in October nineteen eighty-nine, the first domestic violence awareness month commemorative legislation was passed by Congress, providing key leadership in the effort to reduce domestic violence. And whereas domestic violence affects many in our communities, one in three women and one in four men have experienced physical violence by a partner, and one in three teens has experienced some form of abuse in a relationship. As many as ten million children will witness domestic violence each year. And whereas with continued public awareness programs, increased education on healthy relationships, and more people taking action against domestic violence, we will break the cycle of abuse and provide skills to empower victims and children. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim the month of two thousand twenty, of October two thousand twenty-two, as Domestic Violence Action Month, in the city of Covington, and strongly urge all citizens to take action by installing a purple light in their front porch light fixture to honor the victims and give hope to those still living with abuse. And last Saturday, with the help of Melanie and the Rotary Club, we had a dedication for the Covington Domestic Violence Task Force and Victoria Throm who helped champion the Purple Light Nights, which has now gone worldwide. And we had a five K run at community park, which there is a now a purple light out there, light posing. And then Saturday night, we also lit up our own domestic violence purple tree awareness. So with this, I'd like to give you this proclamation.
Thank you.
If there's anything that you'd like to say.
Well, I would, but I thought I'd have a podium, so.
Oh. Well, if you would like to go right ahead.
I know I just have a minute, and thank you all for your support. Shine a light, save a life to end domestic violence. Eighteen years ago in two thousand four, Covington Domestic Task Force was started. Fifteen years ago, two thousand seven, purple lights were started. Twelve years ago, two thousand ten, the tree lighting began, all here in Covington. And I cannot express my gratitude for the support and the innovation of this city to be able to start something that is so wonderful. In two thousand six, Chief Schneider had asked me to be a part of this task force. Little did I know the dynamic people that I would be working with, the strong women, especially Victoria Throm, that had come from the devastations of being domestically abused, and the success that this woman has has brought herself to and brought the city of Covington. It amazes me, the goodness, the lives that have been changed, the education, the love and support. I remember, in fact, I was just in the powder room, and I remember years ago, after attending a meeting with Victoria, we had we had made up brochures. Well, I had to use the powder room, so I laid the brochures on the counter. And as I came out of the restroom, a woman said, where those your brochures? And I said, certainly. She goes, I have just left a domestic violence situation, and I need your help. And so with Victoria's help, we were able to get her to a safe place and to a safe situation. I want to thank Victoria Throm and Bonnie Wells for all their efforts in bringing us to where we are today. The city of Covington for the little landmark that we have at the park. I know it was a long, drawn-out three years, but we got it done. Thank you. Ethan and Jonathan for their creativeness to make it happen. And then I'd like to thank the Covington Rotary for picking up and and driving this thing to where it was this weekend. I'm reminded that in Covington, we've made a stand that violence, domestic violence will not be here. And so with that, I want to thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for your support.
All right, next we have the proclamation for fire prevention prevention week. Aaron.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here. Glasses, I can't even. So we have a proclamation tonight, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, as homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And as cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injury, and heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire death. Whereas this Fire Prevention Week, with the message, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, supports public education measures and enables families to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire. As residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the city of Covington recognizes the value of all information received from the Pugh Sound Regional Fire Authority, and would like the citizens of Covington to support and cooperate with them in order to maintain a safe community. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim October ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Covington, and urge all citizens to support the public safety activities and efforts of the Pugh Sound Regional Fire Authority, provider of fire and emergency medical services in Covington. And Erin, I'd like to give you this proclamation. Thank you for being here, and thank you for representing, because personally, it experienced the the education, and it has definitely worked. So thank you. If there's anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I. First, I just thank you to ever, thank you to the city for for having us. And we appreciate the partnership that we've had for many, many years, working with the city, working with the building department, so important. But it really is our Fire Prevention Bureau to include our public educators, which obviously Melanie is a part of. They're the people that kind of work tirelessly in the background, making sure that they don't have to call nine-one-one. And you know, the Fire Prevention Bureau is one of the bureaus that we constantly work to try to put ourselves out of a job. And you know, we want to make sure that we minimize the number of people who are affected by fire, and especially fire fatalities, and the work that our public educators do to educate people who are not from this area, who may not understand that they're cooking and that some of the hazards that happen if if they don't do things correctly, my just my hats off to them. So we really are the silent people, the people that work in the background to minimize the number of fires that happen this area. And we're very fortunate that those fires are pretty rare compared to most places. So thank you for the acknowledgement. Thank you for the continued partnership. It's it's always a pleasure to work with the city of Covington, and thank you for having
Thank you. All right. Please. Next, we have a proclamation. Whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings, yet the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence, such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools. And whereas it is the responsibility of all citizens and leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, to enhance the learning experiences of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promote good citizenship, and make schools safe and secure. And whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens, and the Observance of America's Safe Schools Week will focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim October sixteenth through the twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, as America's Safe Schools Week. In the city of Covington, we ask that all citizens join us in this special observance and recognition of the value of safe schools in our community as secure and peaceful places for learning, teaching, and working free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear. And Chief, I'd like to give you this proclamation, and I thank you for all that you do to help with our schools and everything in Covington. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah. We are very happy to help promote safe schools and work for keeping them all safe. And we would ask that anybody that sees an issue, call. If you can come address it, it's a good thing. Yeah, I, as a former teacher too, I think if you want that safe environment, that's
Thank you. All right, next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Seeing here, I have, I don't have anybody saying they want to address the public tonight. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Is there anybody online wishing to address council tonight? Please raise your hand. Anybody online wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will come back to a second public comment period towards the end of our meeting. Next up is approval of the amended consent agenda. C one, we have the scribners' error update on the regular meeting minutes. So items C one through C five, is there a motion to approve?
So welcome. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is reports of commissions. First up will be Arts Commission, and I see Patty. Welcome, Patty. Welcome, Patty. You are on mute, and you are ready to go.
There we go. My little hand wasn't working right, and I don't know. Let's see here. Turn on my video as well. Sorry for the delay. There we go. Hello, everybody. It's good to see you. Hi. Um, so I'm just going to give a quick report about our last meeting with the Arts Commission. And our last meeting was actually combined together with our annual retreats, our meeting date and the retreat date were just days apart, so we just combined them both. So an update on the final wraps, we have submitted the call, which I believe I mentioned before, but we have gotten some entries. Super excited, we're going to be reviewing those and then presenting some options to you guys after our next meeting in October. So at our council art commission meeting later in October, you'll be able to see our recommendations of the latest and greatest in the vinyl wraps. So we're super excited to get that going again. The next thing I want to talk about is the Kids Fest. We were overwhelmed with families and kids coming to our booth this year. We had a really great little project. It was a little butterfly that the kids could make, easy to assemble, make and take. We also had some, I'm sorry, my dog's barking in the background. My husband just got home. Anyway, so we had over two hundred and fifty kits made, and we ran out during the during the event. And we also had a hundred and twenty-five kits that kids could actually, if they couldn't stay and make it, they could just take a little baggie home with them and make it. We ran out of those, too. We didn't run out right away. I mean, it lasted most of the event, but we were really happy with the amount of kids that stopped by our booth to create a little bit of art. And the next thing we had talked about is our October twenty-fifth joint meeting with council. We have some really good stuff to present to you guys this year. I know you're going to love it all. And we're really, we've got some really great stuff planned. With our with our meager commissioner count right now, we'll see how much we can get done, but we have some great people with some great ideas. So we're excited to present that to you guys. At our retreat, we had so much stuff to cover that we didn't get to all of it, which is kind of exciting, because that just means there's more for us to cover later. And we've got a very diverse group of commissioners right now with a lot of great ideas. So look forward to what comes of that, and I'm sure you guys will as well. And that's all for today.
Thank you, Patty. Does anybody have any questions, Patty?
Hi, Patty. Would you refresh my memory, and how many wraps are we planning on doing with this latest call?
What, on this first, on this next call? I believe right now we are set up for four. There are approximately nine, if I remember correctly, that we can still cover, but because some of the other projects that we have going on, we cannot do it all at once. There's limited funding. So this time there are four.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Patty, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Covington Economic Development Council. Kalen, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. I'll make it quick. First, thanks for my reappointment. Greatly appreciate that. So two more years of joyous bliss. So I have a couple of things to report out on. Some exciting news, we actually have a business summit that we worked with the city on, and I know that all members of CDUS was involved as far as personally delivering the invitations to businesses around. We all were assigned certain areas. So it was great to get out there. That was my first time to do that, actually, we go business to business, but it was a Safeway complex in that area, and it was great to meet the business owners and the managers and get everybody involved. So we actually did have about twenty people show up. We presented on crime statistics, did some crime, CEPTED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Techniques, and then also had a great discussion on the proposed business and occupational facts, which had great conversation and input from businesses, although it was not that popular. Several businesses saw its purpose and appreciated the city's transparency in there. In addition to that, there was a presentation on commercial development update. So a lot of opportunities there for business owners and business managers. Looking forward to October, actually, our October twenty-seventh meeting, we're going to be inviting more business owners and actual landlords as well. Reagan's going to give actually a development update. Josh will actually speak on behalf of CDUS and looking at the objectives associated with how can we get more business involved? How can we include more businesses as far as that community discussion as well? So getting actively from that perspective. And then we're going to reach out to Justin Van Lenschut. He's going to actually give an update just on being a property owner as well as a business owner here in Covington and his experience. So we look forward to having many people here for that as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Kalen, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all that you do.
All right.
Thank you. Next up is Equity Cultural and Social Justice. Do you have anybody here from? Don't see anybody here from that commission. Uh, next is Human Services, Jessica Kirkland, welcome. Welcome, Jessica. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you for letting me fill in for Debbie. My name is Jessica Kirkland. So nice to meet all of you who I haven't met before. I'm the vice chair of the Human Services Commission. And to update from the last meeting, we did some planning around the Polaris Community Resource Event, and then held the Community Resource Event. And it was so much fun to plan our first community outreach event since the lockdown, and we really considered this a huge success. We had a cross-section of about ten agencies that filled the community space at Polaris, as well as the welcome area with representation from our own Covington Parks and Recs Department, By Maple Place Poison Control, the Salvation Army Street Team, and more. Many agencies that we fund were able to show up and give direct aid and resources to Covington residents. We had a diverse group show up, everyone from children who enjoyed the fire truck. Thank you, Councilman Sean Smith, for not only getting in and rolling up your sleeves and helping us set up, but drawing a serious crowd with that fire truck. I heard kids talking about it as I was leaving that day, just, we got booed and sprayed by the fire truck. So definitely made a memorable impact alongside connecting residents who very much need the aid with the with the agencies that we fund. We also issued a survey to residents that was anonymous, that had strategic questions that are going to help us with our upcoming final funding decision recommendations. And so that leads me into our next item, which is the grant application review. We completed the last of thirty-seven applications, and we're all turning in our score sheets by tomorrow. And on our next meeting, we'll be primarily focused on making those allocation decisions to then present to you all. So that's our update.
Great, thanks, Jessica. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much for being here tonight, and you have a great evening.
You all, too. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have a Parks and Recreation Commission report tonight. Planning Commission, I don't believe I saw anybody from planning there. And then Youth Council, I do not see anybody from Youth Council either. So that concludes our reports of permissions tonight. And let's move into new business. Item number one is to consider an appointment to the Planning Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight?
Jennifer. I would like, oh, sorry. I would like to appoint David Cottle to fill position number three on the Planning Commission with the term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint David Cottle to fill position number three on the Planning Commission with the term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. One of my favorite things about David is he is not a yes man. He is clear, straight to the point, gives his opinion. I worked with him on Planning Commission when I was on it, and he does, as he said in his interview, he does follow the six Ps. No one was ever more prepared. He has a really great sense of the Planning Commission's purpose, and he does a very, very thorough job of really not just reading, but researching for every meeting. He was an excellent chair when he served in that capacity on planning. He's very good at taking all of that. You know, what a lot of people consider boring and complicated, and really making it into a nice summary that other people can understand. I wholeheartedly recommend him for appointment to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. So, and remembering David on the Planning Commission before, he was thorough, so thorough to the point where I actually understood what the Planning Commission does, and to the point where he gave so much information that I was able to like, I got it, I understand, and he kept going to give us even more, and I appreciated that. But I think in the couple of years that he's been off of the commission, he's really understood more of what they did and how good of a job they were doing and how much he missed it. But I think the most important thing is that he said, we need to look at the city like we're tourists. Why did we come here? Why did we choose to stay here? We got to ask that why, and that's something the Planning Commission's doing is going to be, why are people coming here and how can we get them to stay? And as council members, that's something I'm going to start always looking at when I see houses coming up for sale. Why are people making this their home? And how can we, as council, make them feel welcomed in the city by working? And that's going to be working with our Planning Commission and all the rest of us. And I think David, it's an excellent choice to be on our Planning Commission.
Thank you, Phil. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint David Cottle to fill position number three on the Planning Commission with the term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, David. You are back on the Planning Commission. We do not have new business item number two tonight, so we are going to future agenda items. And note, on October eleventh, we do have interviews for Human Services Commission and possibly more. We have a joint study session with the Parks and Recreation Commission at six, and then our regular council meeting at seven. Does council have anything else that they would like to see added to a future? All right. With that, we'll move into council staff comments. First up, Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is necessarily in my lane, but you're doing a, or the city is doing a resource fair on October thirteenth, or. for many of the county's resources. We as a police are involved in that and a lot of our involvement involves handing out basically a flyer that says, hey, the city intends to do this every so often, once a month. As of now, we have several different agencies and I can give you a list if something you want. But if you know of some agencies that might be interested, you might contact either me or Julie Johnston so that we can include them in the list of people that are coming. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Ethan.
Hi, Council. No report from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let everyone know that on Monday, we officially released the request for proposal for the solid waste contract. So we have a couple of rounds of questions that we would be answering in October and November. And then those proposals will be due December fifth. And we will be going through the evaluation process in early January. And then the current schedule would be to bring that towards council around March. So just wanted to provide that update and I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Selena.
I have nothing for you tonight.
Thanks, Selena. Casey.
I just wanted to just give a quick update on the audit that's going on this year. I'm not sure if you remember, I've mentioned it a few times and maybe from Reagan as well. It's been a bit of a challenge this year. But just a quick update, we're still in the middle of our financial statement audit. And just a little bit of a background, but how it generally works is they start in the middle of May and they are generally completely done by June thirtieth. We are in our fourth month of our audit. They've asked for their fourth extension and we have just applied for that. They are still not completed and we are still waiting for them to complete. So I have gotten an update from them and have tried to find out what the challenges are, you know, exactly what's happening. They are having some staffing challenges, some illnesses, some eternity leaves, things, definitely some things that are challenging for them. If I, if I would have had that information in the beginning, maybe a little bit more grace would have been given. But definitely they're, they're facing some challenges. There's also some definite communication challenges. But four months is, is starting to be a little bit drastic. So we're hoping that they, they wrap it up soon, but they are still only halfway done with the audit. They will probably be with us for probably the rest of the year. So I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of an update on where we are and what to look forward to for the, for the rest of the year. They are still within budget though, I will mention. I did ask them where they are in their budget. And for those who don't know how our budget works for the State Auditor's Office, it's about a sixty thousand dollar budget for them to come in and audit, audit the city annually. And they are still within their budget for the year. So I just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
I have a couple of questions on that.
Yes, Joe.
So they're the ones asking for the extension. Why do we need to apply for an extension? If they're the ones telling us they need an extension? I just feel like that's some extra paperwork that doesn't need to happen.
The extension is also for our benefit. It is for our certificate of achievement that we apply for, for the Government Finance Officers Association. So I could not apply for the extension, but then all that does is punish me and I don't get the award for, for GFOA, so.
Okay. Still feel like it's.
It is our fourth extension.
I, I feel like if it's their fault for the extension being needed, that shouldn't affect us and possibly getting an award. But then the next question is, if they are continually asking for extensions through staffing issues, at what point do we start telling them, then our budget's out? You, you guys got to start paying for it yourselves. Feel like being the state would.
Yeah, there, there is no fee for the extension. The extensions are free. So there isn't anything there. It's just, it, it's staff time and it's really like kind of dragging out the process. So it's, it's kind of timely on, on the finance department to, to have turned a six-week project into a, a four-month project, so.
Okay.
We're ready to be done. But I also know it's, it's hard on them too, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Mark.
There's no executive session and I have no other report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Reagan.
Thank you. Casey was very diplomatic in her wording about the orders. We can tell you our truth when it's on the audit. But you all have this postcard here, so this is something we've talked about. We talked about calling them open street meetings, if you recall. This is to really just educate people in Covington about the needs for street maintenance and the costs. Because people are always really shocked at, at what it costs to actually perform that work. So you can see that there's three that we've set up, two of them are in HOAs that will help us promote the events. So we're excited about those and Krista can send out an email, but each one is open to the entire council. We'll issue a notice of quorum for each of those. And we'd love to have as many of you as we can at each of those. But if you can let Krista know which one you'll be attending, that would be really helpful. Another thing to put on the calendar, October third, the chamber's hosting the candidate forum. Those running for office in the forty-seventh district for state office. And that'll be a real life church at five-thirty on October third. And then another thing for Make a Difference Day, we'll be holding a cleanup service project at CCP on October twenty-second at nine AM. Thanks so much, Mayor.
Thanks, Reagan. Krista.
Just a reminder, we have a community open house at Covington Elementary School tomorrow night. The time did change earlier this week to five-thirty to seven-thirty. So please let me know if that update did not come through on your calendar. We look forward to having a few of our council members there. And then we have a special appearance from our mascot Karma at the beginning of the timeframe, so probably the first half hour. I look forward to seeing you there.
Thanks, Krista. Dana.
I feel like my microphone's really, really loud. Purple Lights Night. What a special night. Just a big thank you to everyone who came out. It was very special. I didn't get to do the, the five K. But that night was extremely special. Rod had an amazing word and so did you. I think it's really amazing that something so impactful started right here in Covington. So proud. I'm looking forward to our next council meeting. That's everything.
Thanks, Christina. Beth.
I, I was really grateful that we had the opportunity to reinvigorate the Purple Light Nights events through the help of the city and Puget Sound Regional Fire and Fred Meyer and city staff. Built Saturday evening to come and light up the tree. So appreciate all of that and for the council members that were able to make it, for folks that were able to support it. I think it's great when we can host these types of community events in any scope. And looking forward to more Purple Light and other events in the future. The second thing I wanted to bring up is that for SCA, I sit on the Joint Recommendations Committee. And every year, the committee, the consortium cities vote on recommendations made by King County for how to allocate the seed, community development block grant funds. And granting those awards to applicants. One of the applicants was City of Sea-Tac, who recently took over the minor home repair program that, that Covington, Sea-Tac, Des Moines and Tefosa are all part of. And that program helps provide minor home repairs. Making either adaptations to folks' homes or just small handyman type of work that is provided to people who can't afford to make those repairs. And so we've been in part of that program for years. This, this particular funding round, that program did not get approved simply because there is still more funding left over from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And so what that might look like for Human Services making any recommendations, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to let you all know and hopefully next year, we'll be back on the docket again. The City of Sea-Tac, again, like I said, has just recently taken over managing that program from an administrative standpoint. And I think they're still trying to get their feet under them and figure out how best to administer those funds. So I just thought I'd let you all know since we were affected by that decision.
Can I just add that the City of Covington did use all the funding that was allocated to it, but other programs didn't?
Yeah, normally they get somewhere about a hundred thousand for the four cities and we get our share and we use it. But it's, it's all lumped under one. It's, we take that.
Thank you, Beth. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of you probably saw, you got an email about Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority has an event tomorrow at noon at Station Main Seventy-four, where they're going to be announcing a couple of programs, most notably the Launch of their FD cares program. So, and I, I know the city, we have our community care specialists. So I think it's a really good opportunity for synergy there and communicating and leveraging those multiple resources, so. I think that's it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. On Purple Lights Night, I want to just really commend the, the young people from the Rotary Interact Club that were in attendance. They made it really easy for us because there was a lot of putting, putting up tents and legs and things that were broken. And those kids just rocked it. So I, I feel so comfortable. We've got young people in our community that are going to take over for us. I attended the Covington Water Open House last week. And I'm, you all have probably been over there and seen the amazing program that they have. I got to see the, the big turbine that they built that creates all their own energy. So they're self-sufficient. They've saved sixty-five thousand dollars and, you know, changed that day in saved energy. Also, there was a new planner for the city that was, it was his first day on the job and I got to sit next to him and eat lunch. So that was fun. And then I'm looking forward to the Covington Elementary Open House tomorrow night. That'll be a, a different venue for me. So I don't know if the city has a booth or a table. Okay, so you need help manning that, right? Okay, great.
Thanks, Debbie.
No one has mentioned the food drive, so I thought I would mention that. That was super fun. I think Jeff and I killed it. I wish we could have a way to like weigh in between shifts so we like pick council members against council members. But that was a lot of fun. There was actually a woman who left and she left the store and went back in store and bought stuff. And she went home and brought stuff, like some people were really getting into it. So that was a lot of fun. I am going to be at Chinkins Creek tomorrow for the Arbor Day Tree Planting, which I'm looking forward to. That'll be super fun. I feel like tomorrow's like some crazy calendar as I'm wearing all of these things. And then. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe.
So I'll start with Purple Light Nights. And the event we had at CCP for Victoria, that was just an amazing event. It was filled with people who had a story to tell about either the city's involvement in this, Victoria as a whole, or just even people who didn't know what it was, but were there to understand what's going on and to be thankful. And I think the event was very good. I'm looking forward to people who just stop by and see what that is about. And, you know, it can help some people because it's got the phone number for, for getting help on her plaque. And I think that's important because you might not be able to reach out. You can scribble down a phone number real quick or you can, if people have better memories than me, they can memorize that phone number real quick and make that phone call when they can get into a spot. The event at, at Don Henning Roundabout was great. I think the youth getting out there and holding the signs and getting cars to, just showing what's going on and getting support, getting most honks from the cars was amazing. And I am looking forward to more events like that. And I'm really hoping that one day we don't have to have Purple Light Nights anymore. That is, as a hope and a goal. Other than that, you should have all gotten an email from SCA about signing up for appointments to new commissions or reapplying for the ones you're on, going from there. So I, you know, I think things are going to start moving back to being in person. So I may have to rethink a couple of mine so I don't have to drive to Seattle in the middle of the day anymore or again. So, but with that, just take a look at them. There's information about all of the committees that SCA has that you can possibly join if it's of interest of yours on their website and I, and there's links in the email. Don't remember when they're due because I don't, I didn't look that part up, but I'll look it up later. But make sure you get your stuff in so the nominating committees can get you done, get you looked at and appointed and pick and vote you all in. And with that, you know, it's starting to get colder, starting to get darker. Pay attention to the roads, pay attention to the kids walking to and from school. Let's just be safe out there.
Thank you, Joe. I've got a couple of, going off of what you just said, Joe, I believe you have until the end of October, might be the third week of October to get in your requests to be on one of the boards for SCA. It's very valuable that we as a city be represented regionally so that we're, it's, it's like, you know, there's, there's an old saying, Mayor Pete Lewis brought it up, but if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So we want to continually be represented where we're at. I have a SCA executive meeting tomorrow and we are continuing to discuss our executive director. We've narrowed it down to, and I believe we might be discussing that tomorrow, if not by this Friday, the latest on who the, it's, it's really hard between these two because they're both very good candidates and they both have very good qualities. SCA Networking Dinner is next Wednesday and Brenton, it'll be in person. So make sure you get Krista if you're interested in going. Purple Light Nights, what an awesome event. It was so nice to see this, all the people. I'm sorry I missed it in part, but hearing about dedication to Victoria Thromm, with her starting this back in two thousand and four with Kurt Lenzley and her just grabbing the torch and running with it. Being on the Covington Domestic Violence Task Force and watching this grow. And just seeing everybody, pictures I saw from the, at the park and then all the kids and everybody at the Don Henning on Saturday night. So thank you to Rotary for doing this and the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority for making sure that this happens and that this porch continues to grow worldwide. Yeah, the food drive, I think our team did that. My goal is always to beat what I did last year. And I think even though I was there all last year, I think we beat it just in the three and a half hours that I was there. But I, I really think that everybody, thank you to each of you for being there. Every one of you was there this year and that is a lot. And it's not just about getting the food and cash that we received this year. But I was able to connect the family that was in need and sent them over to the storehouse. I'm sure there were several others that showed up that were able to grab that information and head over there for when they need the help. And reading those proclamations tonight hit on. Thank you for doing those. And with that, we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. And comments are not intended for conversation and debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Is anybody online wishing to address council tonight? Seeing nobody raise their hands, there is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-three. Thank you.